Good evening, it is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, May 19, 2021. And this is the regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council. I now call to order at Sandpoint Community Hall 204, South First Avenue in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Shelby Ronsdorf residing. Also present are council members Deb Rule, Shannon Sherman, John Darling, Kate McAllister, and Andy Grove, along with Councilman Joel Espira, who's standing in the lobby. So now rise the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we're standing, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, on the agenda this evening are announcements. Are there any announcements from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just one brief announcement. This evening, we'll start the demolition of the building at 3:30 North First, the former Arlo's Restaurant location. Workers, we did permit the demolition. It was approved through Army Corps as well as Department of Lands of some of the required permitting before it goes to us for demolition approval. But we permitted the project to take place between 10 PM and 10 AM so to limit impact on the downtown businesses. So there will be traffic restrictions between First and Main, the intersection of First and Main and Cedar and Second while they're working and they do have flaggers down there on site that if there's pedestrians at those hours trying to navigate downtown, they will have flaggers down there. But demolition starts today and we expect that to be wrapped up in the next few weeks.
Any announcements from council? Okay. We have under announcements this evening, a presentation from, it looks like Kathy is Karen not making it tonight?
No, it was staff meeting tonight.
Okay. So Kathy Samuels is here with us today. She's from the Music Conservatory of Sandpoint. She's a president of the board still, right? Okay. And she will provide an overview of the Sandpoint Center Arts and Culture, I'm sorry, Sandpoint Center for Arts and Culture and plan renovations to the old city hall building at Second Main. Would you like to come forward to the podium, Kathy? Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor Shelby. This is kind of fun. I decided I'm your introvert. Since I'm in the announcements, as Mayor Shelby said, I'm Kathy Samuels. I've been chairing the board of Conservatory. This is my seventh year chairing the board. I've been in and around Conservatory for about 10 years since my son was six on the record. So I'm very passionate about what's going on there. I thought I would start with five brief trivia questions for those of you that may or may not know, you're allowed to speak and play along. What, what is the Music Conservatory? Does anyone have a definition or what do you think goes on there?
Are we supposed to talk? Are we supposed to talk?
Yeah. Music education, right? That counts. We consider it like a trade school for talent, which is how we view it from youngest all the way to adults. What about where the school is located and what historic building?
The old city hall.
The old city hall, very good.
Firehouse.
Was firehouse, was jail, police station.
And there's a library.
And the library, probably other things. How many students would you estimate you teach on a weekly basis?
300.
Very good. Between 250 and 300. Most at that location, some in schools as well. So I think that's just something we don't think, I don't think about enough when it comes to the downtown. But two more questions. Does the child need previous music experience to enroll there? Love to know. Why? We have an instrument library. We also give out scholarships, $5,000 to $10,000 annually. We are a nonprofit, so we're not there to make a dollar. We're there to make music as much as possible. And let's see if we can name different instruments that we might teach there.
There's a lot.
Yeah. Yeah. Drums.
Strings.
Yes. Recorder. We probably do. I haven't seen it. Blues. Blues. Recorder. Yes. Woodwinds. We have heard some of the more interesting ones, mandolin, the upright bass, voice. A lot of times, people don't know that we also teach voice.
Theater.
Theater, very good. And new this year because of COVID, we started a chimes choir because voice wasn't really the thing during the pandemic. So anyway, on to why I'm really here. I, I hope I sparked some interest to invite you to visit the Conservatory if you've never been inside. The doors of the Conservatory come in. We'd love to give you a tour, especially because we're about to embark on this community project, which Jennifer shared that she has given you. We purchased the building in 2019 and we have plans to renovate. The first phase will be to renovate the recital space that's right next to the fire station doors. And the good news is that that is very close to happening. We've actually done the inside demolition so that the doors can be installed. They're being painted right now. They will be installed on June 15th. So we have a huge goal that this will change the makeup of the downtown in some ways, inviting people to hang out. We, we know that we bring families and parents and students to town, but we want people to come and listen to music, whether it's a student practicing on piano or an actual concert. I did bring, because it's not in the pamphlet, a rendering of what that will look like from the outside. Another update that I wanted to share is that Rotary has sponsored seating for outside of those stores. So I have a mockup of what that looks like from the outside. So when you come to the Conservatory or to one of our concerts, you'll be able to sit outside the doors as well as come in. The Arts Council has an art gallery inside those doors. So we're hoping that it's a place that visitors, community members will walk by and comment. Most people walk right by it, don't really know what's in there. They think maybe there's one office inside, maybe a few teachers. We actually got 20 instructors. So this is our opportunity to, to invite the public in. And I'm here tonight to invite you as well as the city, the public to participate. It's a community project. It's an old building with so much history. We, I'm sure you read the article that we found the bell. So on the front of this pamphlet, it used to be a cupola up top. It was removed in 1950 and someone had chased down the bell years ago, but the gentleman who owned it wouldn't sell it. We relocated this person about six weeks ago and the Historical Society actually got on its own and convinced them that this bell will go back to its original home. Why don't we, why don't you allow it to go? And so they did and it'll actually be in Lakeview Park on Friday. So it's going to have a temporary home there until we're able to fully restore the building. Ideally, put the cupola back on top should engineering fees allow that. So. And then on the other side of that, that will handle, I have two events that will be happening, one at Lakeview Park where the bell will be, if you want to go see it. And then on the 27th of June, that will be the first concert that we will hold in the new space with the doors open. Obviously, there's no rain that day. So that is, that is what I'm here to invite you to and to share with you. We really want you to be aware from the city's perspective that this is something we feel we're doing on behalf of the community. So the more people that know the better.
Karen assured me that the bell will only ring for three things. One, if there's a concert. Two, if there's an alien invasion. And three, if it's the end of the world. But we have to determine what's happening.
Perfect. Runs great.
Right. Yes. I'm in the concert every time.
In your best of Ranobos.
Exactly. So if there are any questions about the project, I can take a few.
Okay. Any questions?
Nothing.
Kathy, thank you so much for sharing this with us. And this is really exciting. Really appreciate learning what MCS is doing for Sandpoint and fantastic in for you, of course.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for the inputs. All right. Well, now proceed with the public forum portion of meeting, which gives the public an opportunity to address council myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or in items or in any topic not listed on tonight's agenda. At this time, I'll take just a moment to recite the rules and procedure for public comment during Sandpoint City Council meetings, both during public forum and during further opportunities for public comment during the meeting. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and do not have an opportunity to do so, we will give everyone an opportunity to speak by reopening the public forum and by regular meeting, a regular agenda. Please note, if you are participating by Zoom, you'll need a working microphone in order to participate. When your name is called, you'll see a prompt on your screen to unmute. You'll need to press the button, unmute button in order to be heard. For those participating here in person, if you wish to speak, you will need to fill out a sign up form. It's located at the front, by the front door there and hand it to staff here anywhere at the table. Jennifer, that is referred to actually. The forums are available, as I mentioned, on the table by the door. In the interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments made by others, but simply state your support for those comments. Comments shall not be personally directed toward, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to the mayor or city council or staff during your comments. Each speaker, each speaker will be allowed three minutes, three minutes, which will be counted then using a timer stoplight. The green light will indicate one minute remaining. The yellow light indicates 30 seconds remaining. And when the light turns red, your time has expired. We'll now begin with the first 20 minutes of public forum. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak remotely?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on any item not listed on the agenda or on the content calendar? Okay. This time, we will close the public forum portion of meeting. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,505,672.99, reflecting $640,294.39 for regular payables and $865,378.60 for payroll. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved.
Same.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sproul?
Yes.
And the consent calendar is approved. The final item on the agenda this evening is a proposal to amend city code to provide for locations and city parks and rights of way where dogs are allowed on-leash and off-leash. City Administrator Justice Stiglitz will provide a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, I have in Woodgriff our park director. These proposed ordinance changes are in follow-up to our discussion that we had two meetings ago on the results of a dog survey conducted last summer. We had about 800 participants in that survey and we had discussed some proposed policy at that last meeting. Essentially, the ordinance before you tonight is primarily cleanup of language that we had in our prior ordinance and ultimately in city code. And the proposed changes are a new section on dogs allowed on leash that identifies that dogs are allowed on leash on all city rights of way and windbag and city bay, city beach marina, but must be under the control of their handler at all times. At the, in our rights of way at the windbag and at city beach marinas, we've kind of, we've had an unwritten policy that dogs have been allowed. We haven't enforced dogs being in those areas. So this was just really a cleanup of past practices in the ordinance proposed. And second is dogs are allowed on leash in the following city parks with exclusions noted. They must be under control of their handler at all times. Children's playground areas, tennis, basketball, pickleball, and volleyball courts are excluded as well as sand beach areas, skate parks, and inside the fence at War Memorial Field. Those parks where dogs are allowed under these circumstances include Lakeview Park, Hickory Park, the Sports Complex Pathway, which is Traverse, Centennial, and Great Northern Parks. Dogs are permitted on the pathway September 15th through April 15th of each year, but prohibited outside of the paved pathway. The city beach pathway, dogs are permitted on the pathway again during seasonal allowances as we discussed September 15th through April 15th on the pathway once again. And we've also noted that dogs are allowed in the parking lot and at the boat launch area year round. And again, this has been past practice. So people, many times particularly during summer months, find that they have to park in the city beach parking lot in order to access the Ponderay Bay Trail. And so they're getting dogs out of the car and we don't enforce dogs in the parking lot area. It's really on the grass and again, in the beach proper area, recreation area. Dogs are permitted off-leash specifically at Humbert Mill Park. And I've specified in this that that's also known as Ponderay Bay Trail. We know it as Humbert Mill Park in the city, but I think most people in the community know that as the Ponderay Bay Trail. And also, we have added in the McConnect Trailhead. So as it stands currently, the city portion, which is really the trailhead, the initial portion of the trail until you get outside of our property, we require dogs on leash and then they could be off. So it's been a common practice that dogs are off-leash. So we just reflected that again here in the ordinance change.
I have a question.
Yes.
So the ball, the foot disco, of course, which as we all know is property owned by the wastewater utility, that's absent from here. I know in practice, people take their dogs there. What is the city's proposed policy regarding that?
Right now, we've leased that property. So it's under really rules implemented by the leaseholder as opposed to the city. At the time that we make a decision, what we're doing with, with that particular property, if the city retains that property, that's when we would look at rules with that if we're not leasing it, if it is city in control of what is happening there. And then in ordinance section two, under two A, we specifically at city beach noted that no dogs are allowed on city beach property except as provided above to just kind of clean that up. There was a bit of a challenge kind of cleaning up all of these, our codes related to dogs because of what it was in a section related to animal control. And then we had a separate section that was specific to city beach. So within this ordinance, we cleaned up both of those codes together. We did have a question yesterday, I believe, relative to dogs that are on the beach that are under contract. We contract with an individual currently to bring in a dog to manage the geese down at city beach. And that is specifically allowed under our existing code. So that's why you're not seeing that in this ordinance. That's already provided in our code. Kim, did I miss anything?
No, I'm very pleased with our progressive, but still cautious approach. I think that being able to go in and have our dogs and people who are exercising their dogs, especially in the fall around the sports complex, which is off the street and safe for people. My son lives in that neighborhood and he's extremely happy. Tell me that today. So I'm pleased that we're taking this step and looking forward to it. We will be putting up and taking down fecal matter collection stations on these areas that are season. So we will provide the infrastructure that's needed to succeed.
And we're looking at new signage at city beach, correct?
Yeah. If anybody comes up with a creative way, we talked about this in staff meeting a little bit today, is when you go down to city beach right now, if you truly go down there, maybe you do this tomorrow, look at all the signs, just look for signs. And then there's really, wow. A, there's a lot, what do they say? I know that everybody's blind to that. But we do, to my mind, have an opportunity to capture the key messages that we want to communicate to our park visitors right at the entrance. So there's got to be a tactful, nice, clear way of saying, you know, maybe it's the alcohol, dogs, don't feed the birds. I don't know. Those are the type of things that, you know, we don't want to have a great big sign, 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 but that is our time to capture. So who's creative? Throw out that challenge to our council members.
I think we're going to work with the community resource officers on that and reflect our signs that we have currently that have the, the dog signage right on it and either cross through the dog or where the dogs are allowed and get a specific sign relative to the dogs because the rules do change and it's getting lost in terms of our marking, as Kim mentioned, for other rules down at the beach. We have our signs currently up right at the sign at the entrance to city beach, but commonly people aren't seeing it there. So we're going to be looking at something else right at the entrance that is more clear for people coming in.
And perhaps even it could be changed periodically, you know, so there's change. Anytime you see sameness, it's a, it's a, you adjust to it. So I just think that as our message changes of animal, our dogs on leash during our on-leash period, then we celebrate. And post that, you know, versus the no or I always try to say no in a positive way. So that's hard.
Mr. Mayor? I was just, we don't have like, I know this is current long-term plans, but more of a general signage that kind of has, you know, the park rules, you know, where you, you know, as you're peandering by or it's in a playground or somewhere generally in the entrance. It wouldn't be the signs where you have the extra, the dog or the dog being paid necessarily. But I think in general for the park, we kind of need a posting of even things so much as, you know, these are when the bathrooms are open year round or just an informational board that will also include exactly what our plan is in general. So for those people who really wanted to know what was going on the beach and, you know, maybe even information about, you know, needing a fishing license or where do you get that locally or some different stuff that would be helpful. My intrigue, people are actually reading some of that stuff and then you could put the dog rules on there. So.
That's great. But we have, have you like the bull trap people or the osprey people or the, or the birders, you know, there's people that are constantly coming in and it truly is a challenge of being here for a long time. There's so much information out there. How do you tactfully share it and not scare people away?
Right. So.
That's a hard one to boil.
There's a pretty good board at Memorial. I mean, just with the life jacket thing and then they kind of talk about the bull trap. And that's mainly specific to that, but I think that was done pretty well. So I'm thinking of something that's sort of like that. And while I have your attention and I'm speaking, are, I'm still very concerned about the enforcement piece and I'd like us to be proactive as opposed to reactive. And have we sat down and do we have a plan on paper for how we're going to address that is when these changes come? If that makes sense, as opposed to being more reactive.
Well, we've already talked about the signage. We've also looked at, and we'll be creating some brochures for our community resource officers for people that have dogs that they have that can hand out about what our rules are relative to dogs, not only in the parks, but on the right of ways in town. We have hired a third community resource officer. So they are pretty proactive and daily handling dog issues, dog issues at parks, dog issues in towns. About a third of their time actually ends up getting spent on animal control issues.
And so do we have a plan for instructions for them that say, okay, this is new, you know, we're going to have a warning and then, or are we just working in that general reaching out to make sure everybody's very educated so that we don't run into a lot of conflict? I'd like to see if those move in.
We typically have warnings about it really for when we get to our, our busy areas like city beach, really it's status quo until we get in the fall. At this point, because we're past our, we're past our seasonal time and, and that was kind of purposely too, looking at being able to get out with education about this and then open this up when we get past our busy season. As it stands at the beach right now, dogs aren't allowed at the beach. We're pretty actively daily enforcing that. But this does clarify, because we do get questions, that dogs are allowed in the parking lot. So we'll have people who are concerned about using the parking lot, unloading there to use Ponderay Bay Trail, for example, because as it stands right now, our current rules, our dogs aren't allowed at city beach, which includes the parking lot.
And then people who take their dogs boating, either our large customers or people that are trading, you know, their family members now, a lot of them out there.
Mr. Mayor? I am, I'm concerned about the, the crows. I mean, I think, you know, if that's going to be their own job, checking dogs and having a lot of events in the park and also in other parks, people are angry about their dogs when you even have signs. And I'm a dog owner. I love dogs. But when, like we put up signs saying no dogs in the event, like Beer Fest, I mean, people get furious and I, you know, and it's great that this is what the community wants, but I think that community members are going to take advantage of us. I really do. You know, but we can change it if we have to, but I'm really concerned about the crows. I, I don't feel that we should pay them solely to make sure dog poop is cleaned up. That's just my opinion.
I would just like to comment from every one of the little poop bag stations you put up, you put three garbage cans to match it because those bags are fabulous, though there's no place to put them. And you almost see as many of them on the ground as you see in the garbage. So. Sand Creek Trail, three or four, every single time you walk in.
The poop bags?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's because, it's not because of the lack of trash.
Maybe they're coming back to get it.
Well, and that's what they, that's the plan, right? Yeah. That's what cracks me up. It's like, okay, go, you have to take it out.
I know.
And there's a reason I bought them pink, guys. They're pretty visible. Yeah, no, that, that's definitely common. You know, people will, it's, it's an out and back, right? So they may deal with it and then pick it up on the way back.
Quite often, they forget.
But you know what? I've, I've been here for a long time and it's, it is getting better. People's attitudes. And the sad thing of it is, it's a small minority that are not responsible, that give the majority of proper and caring pet owners a bad rap. And there's a lot of those people that actually go out of their way to take up for other people. So I think that really that's the solution. You're never going to change that percentage of people, right? They are who they are. So if we could just educate everybody else to help and then be part of that team, I think that's the key. Let's all be in a party together and when you see an opportunity to, to help out or clean up or be part of the solution.
Kim, would it be possible to, even on the Bay Trail, go station another camp a bit further out?
You understand that only to the table is city property. So we've got plenty within our range. Then it's a Dover, Ponderay, I mean, a Ponderay.
Ponderay doesn't have legal access to their trail, so.
They do through, I think of the city, there's legal.
Over the tracks?
Oh, no, no, no. Don't do sand. Right.
Which is a bit inconvenient.
I hear your point, and I guess that's, we should work together on your report. There's a long stretch where there's no at least bags.
You could budget a new TV.
Jennifer, can I?
On one thing, so I, I thought I heard you say that it says under, is it? Item, it's under B, dogs allowed on leash. Dogs are allowed on, on leash on all city rights of way and wind. Dogs are allowed on, on leash on all city rights of way and windbag and city beach marinas. That includes the parking lot, right?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Okay, just want to clarify on that, so.
And I specifically called that out under city beach. If you look under BD, city beach pathway, dogs are permitted on the pathway.
Yeah, thanks.
And the parking lot.
Okay, I appreciate that.
She took the hottest lodge of like five different places and tried to consolidate. She did a great job, so.
I don't know, but it's super clean, but this is a start.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this issue? And for anyone online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seeing none. I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows. In ordinance of the city of Sandpoint and Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, amending Sandpoint City Code Title V, Chapter IV, Section V, Animal Control Provisions. In Title VII, Chapter V, Section III, Beach Rules and Regulations, Providing for repeal and severability and providing for publication in an effective date. I'll entertain a motion if the ordinance passes its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. Second, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Sproul?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ready for dogs. The ordinance, sorry, passes first reading by title only and summary is approved. I would entertain a motion if the rules require increased separate readings. Once any ordinance is entirely be suspended and that the ordinance passes second and third readings under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
Same.
Same.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sproul?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darling?
Yes.
The motion passed and this ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules. And with that, there's no new business this evening. So that include, concludes our agenda and this meeting is adjourned.